All right, I'll call our public meeting to order. If you would kindly stand by the pledge. In God, would you like to be as his pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First is agenda review. Superintendent, do you have no additions, as anyone else?
Karen, how do you like to discuss the literacy? March 11th meeting of the Friday end of the year.
We'll get to that under Roman 7. You'll see section D. As we can discuss the finance meeting, getting a March 11th in the meeting that's up. With no other additions to the agenda, next is the Carpenter School student presentation.
Hi, welcome. I am Tori Rowe. I am the principal here at Carpenter School. It's my very first year. I am loving it. It's been a wild, wonderful ride so far. The teachers and students are taking me through all of their special traditions and I'm just learning so much about Wolfboro and the residents and everything. I just love it. I promised some parents here tonight that I would be brief because their kiddos need to get to bed so they can come to school bright eyed in the morning. So I have some kindergarten teachers here that will be presenting to you. They are going to be sharing some of our literacy curriculum that we're introducing. And I will pass the mic over to Dr. Hills right now. And I will go get the kids.
Good evening. Tonight's presentation by Ms. Carissa Doobie's Kindergarteners showcases how our young students learn how to read. You may have heard the phrase "science of reading" in the news or even from our state's education department. While the science is not new, the strategies built from the science are gaining traction for their effectiveness. The strategies you see this evening are just some of the instructional practices built on the science of how humans learn how to read. These strategies focus on building a solid foundation in phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary, so that students can develop strong fluency and comprehension skills. We are in our early adoption year for grades K through 3, and already teachers are seeing students having an earlier and stronger reading base. Our first whole year of implementation begins next year. We will also be adopting evidence-based instructional strategies at grades 4 through 6 in the coming years. Tonight's presentation showcases early foundational skills, and that is the competency, foundational skills of literacy. I could wax on for hours about the science of reading and other literacy-related topics, and I welcome anyone to reach out to me if you'd like more information, but you didn't come here to listen to me. You're here for the kids, so please welcome Mrs. Doobie and some of our Carpenter Kindergarteners. Hello, everybody. Kindergarteners, can we say hi to everybody here today?
Hi!
So I missed what, the introduction, but I just, we're going to share a few components of the IMC curriculum, mostly focusing on the long-term sensory pieces, so the tactile things, the parts that get us moving, which we talk about how that wakes up different parts of our brain, helps us learn, helps us remember. So the first thing that we want to talk about, can you hear me? Is these letter cards. So every day, we practice some or all, depending on what time of year, of these letters, right? And we read the letter, and then we read the sound. Does anyone want to, can we show them what that sounds like? We can all do it together. Are you ready? So let's eyes on me. What do we say?
I says go.
So we say the letter name and then the sound. Now vowels are kind of tricky, so our vowel cards are a different color, and we use our hands to help us remember, right? So can somebody show the school board what do we do with our hands to help us remember the letter I? Can you show us what we're doing? So Beckett, why do we put our hand up on our cheek?
Because your cheek goes up.
Say "it", right? Our cheek goes up. Can we show them, and then maybe they can try it? Can you show up, Beckett?
I says it.
All right, let's all do it together. Ready?
I says it.
You are more than welcome to add to this. All right, what about you? Who can show them what we do for the letter U? Charlie?
U says up.
So why do we put our hand on our stomach?
Because our stomach moves.
All right, can you show them one more time?
Yes.
All right, show them one more time.
U says up.
All right, let's all do it together. Ready? U says up. What about letter A? There you go. What do we do?
A says ah.
And why do we put our hand below our chin like that?
Because, because our mouth opens up.
All right, let's all do it together. A says ah. Pretty good. What about letter E? Benjamin?
E says eh.
Can you tell them why we put our hands like that on our mouth?
Because, because your teeth go up.
All right, ready? Let's show. Ready? E says eh. What letter? What about O? Nickley, tell them about that letter.
O says ah.
Why do we put our hand around our mouth like that?
Because our mouths look like o's.
Our mouths look like o's. All right, ready? Let's all do it together.
O says ah.
Perfect. All right, we also practice writing our letters. So in front of you are some sandtrays, which finally allowed myself to let into my classroom in the hands of five-year-olds. And we're just going to show you how we practice writing our letters, but we also remind ourselves of the sounds when we practice. Does anybody want to show the school board how we use our sandtrays with one finger to practice letters? All right, Thea, pull on over there. All right, so Thea's going to listen carefully to the sound. I'm going to ask him to spell. So I'm going to say, look at me, ready? Spell "mm".
M says mm.
All right. Everybody want to try it or less? All right, we're going to do a different one. So we ask, we ask the kids to look because different sounds can do different things with their mouths. So I'll say "eyes on me" and then spell "mm".
M says mm.
And after we write a letter, Thea, what do we do? Very gently. We practice that a lot. Spell "ah".
O says ah.
Spell.
S says. S.
Trick jump. All right, spell.
That was loud.
That sound is more like.
T says koo. N says koo.
Yes, two letters that make that sound. Thank you, child. All right, we're going to take a break from the sandtrays. All right, we also learn.
Sandtrays are tiny, Beckett.
Yes, those are Mrs. Doobie's sandtrays. Can you do Mrs. Doobie? When we learn a new letter or a new concept, we also have these screens to help us learn and remember practicing how to write the letter. So up until about this point in the year, we are learning a new letter every week. Can anybody come and show and explain why and how we use this screen? Beckett, come on over, buddy. So our first, yeah, you should have a letter T piece of paper under the screen, and then that green crayon is pretty important, too. Beckett, can you explain what we're going to do with the screen first?
You put it on top of the black letter in the house and you trace it three times. T says t. T says t. T says t.
Magic number three. After we trace it with our finger, what do we do?
We put our finger on the letter and we use the gray brown and trace it three times.
The crayons do break, but that's great for little kids. Sorry, do you got a problem? So he's tracing it three times, and then what do we do?
We take, we take the screen out and write our own names.
So then I'll just walk around and help with print or formation as they practiced a couple of big ones and then some small ones at the bottom, right? We'll do a few more. All right, I thought before we part away, we are at the point in the year where we have practiced letter sounds, learning words together, and we are pretty good at reading. So we're going to take turns reading from one of our books called "The Web". "The Web". So these are to quotable readers, and they utilize a lot of the sounds that we're focusing on that given week, as well as we quote them red words or trick words. Trick words that we will see often in things that we read. So we practice talking about different words, and they're pretty awesome.
The bug has a web. The web is wet. The web's web is not hot.
The, the bug put his rug, rug on, on the web for a bed.
I quit. I like my web, wet web, and bed, said the bug.
All right, nice and short. We practice reading them every day.
You were supposed to go page four and page five.
Did we skip a page?
Two.
That's confusing.
You skipped two.
The web, the, the web's web is, is on the hut.
What did you learn today?
His ear peels like the black and his wet web.
We're going to read page six. Sarah, do you want to discuss the page six?
The bug put his rug on the web for a bed. I like my wet web in bed, said the bug.
That is not it, but in a nutshell, that is what we do day after day all year round. Do we have fun?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Now we'll test.
Okay, thank you to our Carpenter School Kindergarteners. All right, we'll move on to our next part of our agenda, acceptance of minutes. You'll see we have a pool of minutes, so I'll first seek a motion to accept the board meeting minutes of February 3, 2024. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Manning?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Abstain.
Guy?
Abstain.
Brudy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll now seek a motion to accept the minutes of February 5, 2024. Second. Any discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Just a quick question. Brudy, the 50 minutes that we postponed from the last meeting pending corrections?
Yes.
We know that all those corrections have been made.
They're in blue, and I personally reviewed them and found them to be satisfactory. If they're missing something, please, if you don't let us know. Okay, no, thank you for clarifying. No other discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Second, please.
Dr. Jim.
Dr. Manning?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Dana? Tom?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Abstain.
Guy?
Abstain.
Brudy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next is the Human Resources Committee meeting minutes of March 7. Who's in attendance at that meeting?
I won't.
Tom and Dana, so if one of you would make the motion and the other would second it.
There was something?
That was March 7.
I've got a motion about the September minutes. Sorry.
Any discussion? Hearing done, the clerk will call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'll seek a motion for the acceptance of the Finance Committee meeting minutes of March 11.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? The March 11 Finance Committee meeting minutes. Tom, I thought you had comments.
I thought we were going to do that, but...
I think this would be the time it's on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to relay the fact that at that meeting, we made the decision to offer a settlement to Wolfboro in regards to their impact fees, and we delegated one staff to bring those to over there. And, and as I was preparing for this meeting, I came across the policy that says that committees are allowed, allowed to do the parasitivity, making decisions that are binding to the board. So the proper thing would then for us to discuss it and come back to the board, and I feel that, and it wasn't something I was aware of at the time, now I am, I'm sorry.
I wasn't aware either, and that's something we can flag for our next agenda. I think we can probably still pass the meeting minutes as they are. Jim Pittman?
Just to address that, my understanding that the action of the committee was to have our administration to engage in a negotiation with the town, which was not an authorization to make those payments. It was to go to the town and they can offer a settlement, which I assumed they would then, if they had reached agreement, they'd come to this board for payment. So I don't believe this was a approval for payment, just approval to continue negotiations. My understanding is...
Tom, if, um... Charlene?
I just, when I read that, my question is, because according to policy, actions of committees are not binding on the board, they're advisory only, I guess I'm a little confused about how the committee authorized Cathy O to offer an amount. I don't, that's not binding, so I don't understand why, why that particular action was taken.
I wasn't on the Finance Committee, but I'm, or chair of the board then, so I can't answer that, but would any of our administration like to clarify? Or have any comments?
We sent a letter to the town of Wolfboro, offering the, half the impact fees, and it was our understanding that once we received a response from the town, that we would bring it back to the full board, and that would be for the board's consideration.
I don't know if that's satisfactory, Tom. Do you have any additional comments? But we can continue to try to collaborate and figure out the best path moving forward. You know, all nine board members will be able to have a say in what exactly happens moving forward. Okay. Is there any other discussion on the meeting minutes or that topic? Hearing done, the clerk will call the roll. Well, not the roll, sorry, the members who are still in the board group present at that meeting for the Finance Committee.
Tom?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now move on to the school board meeting of March 11. I presently, I'll seek a motion for us to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Brudy?
Is there any discussion, edits? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Dr. Manning?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Tom, I pardon?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Shackle?
Abstain.
Guy?
Abstain.
Brudy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And lastly, the Academic Affairs Committee meeting minutes of March 14. Those presence were Charlene, Dr. Jim, Mary, and myself. I'll seek a motion as we approve those meeting minutes.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dr. Manning, seconded by Charlene. Is there any discussion, any edits? Clerk will call the roll, please.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Manning?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Brudy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And lastly, we have our manifest. The manifest total for tonight is $3,431,915.16. I'll seek a motion to approve tonight's manifest.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Jim Pittman, seconded by Dr. Jim. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dr. Manning?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Abstain.
Guy?
Abstain.
Brudy?
Aye.
I have the motion passes.
Thank you. Next is public input. Public input, our policy is 15 minutes, but three minutes allotted for individuals. We ask that you please state your name, in town, and residency, and be respectful and kind in terms of meeting topics and not hide individuals. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for serving and thank you for the, or welcome to the newly elected school board members. I'm Katie Pattenell, the state representative for Tuckerboro and Wolfboro, and a member of the House Education Committee. And I just want to report on what's going on in terms of the education funding lawsuits. There's a stay issued on the conval decision, which increases the base adequacy rate for people spending. I've heard a rumor that there's a stay on the RAND decision, but I couldn't find anything on the Supreme Court website to validate that today, so regardless of whether or not there's a stay on those decisions, the New Hampshire House Division II Finance Committee is voting tomorrow on House Bill 1583 in an executive session that begins at 11:30. You can watch that on YouTube on the state website. So this is an amendment to the original House Bill 1583, and it increases the base adequacy from what we voted on in my committee of, to an increase to $4,400 per pupil to the court decision of $7,356.01 per student. This amendment also will increase the statewide education property tax from $363 million to $773 million. This will significantly increase Wolfboro and Tuckerboro because they want to collect what's called the excess statewide education property tax. Right now, Tuckerboro and Wolfboro combined have 3.1 million in, quote-unquote, excess statewide education property tax. This amendment would increase the combined total to 8.8 million. The amendment also does control in the future for not increasing the school board budget above 3% over the consumer price. above 3% over the Consumer Price Index, I believe. Just to be clear, over the last three years, the state has approved an additional $400 million in educational spending, and just last year, we approved $160 million. So this is, this could potentially have a significant impact on the property taxes in our town.
Thank you for your attention, Representative.
Good evening, Representative Glenn Cordelli, representing Tuftonboro, Wolfboro, and Ospey, and, uh, welcome to the new members, and, uh, great presentation by the kindergartners tonight. I wanted to comment on the strategic plan that was approved last meeting, the updated strategic plan. I think in some cases, it's worse than the previous version. I look and see that, uh, the focus areas have changed, um, and that the dates for increasing proficiency rates have changed. However, what was added to increasing proficiency rates is that they will increase proficiency rates for the subpopulations. Subpopulations only. If you looked at the definition for this philosophy, these subpopulations, I guess males don't matter. Going to the next area. Student wellness. Um, this is student wellness coordinator, I guess, approved in the budget. Um, I imagine that, uh, copied that, um, top description would be available, if I could call the office. Then by the start of the '25, '26 school year, uh, the collaboration, um, to provide for nutritious meals to all students through private and public partnerships. Is that reflective of legislation that we've seen, that we're in call for free meals for all students, uh, fills we've seen in the legislature? Uh, so I would, uh, expect that Board Member DeJays will, uh, accuse himself of those discussions since he's a registered lobbyist for Rancher Hunger Solutions. Focus area three, uh, cultural belonging. Uh, there is a, uh, equity team to be contracted, uh, for, and I assume that there'll be an RFP that's publicly available, uh, to look at for that, uh, uh, service, and that there will be, uh, an audit, an equity, equity audit conducted by the end of the year, and I assume that audit will also be made available to the public. Also under that same subsection, uh, by the end of the next, by the end of this school year, uh, increased opportunities to involve underrepresented, upper, underrepresented community members. I'm wondering why underrepresented community members are gonna be more involved? Why don't involve all community members? And getting rid of this 15-minute rule would be a great start to, uh, encouraging more public participation in your meetings.
That's, um, that's three minutes. Do you have any additional comments?
One more.
Go ahead, please.
Um, yes, during the, uh, campaign, I attended a couple of the, uh, candidate nights, and discipline, uh, came up in a couple of those meetings, and there's no real, um, solution that anyone had for increasing discipline in schools, um, but I see, uh, by the end of '26 and '27, there's gonna be a reduction in exclusionary discipline in, in, uh, in-and-out of school suspensions. So I'll be curious to see how that plays into improving discipline in schools. Thank you.
Would you be willing to submit your questions to the SAU office?
My questions?
Yes, would you be able to submit them in writing, by email, or even in writing, bring them to the office?
Um, for what purpose?
Casey'd like them answered.
Okay, for the, for the things I'm looking for answers for, I will ask for those, yes.
Okay, thank you, Representative.
Hi, I'm Emily, I'm in Wolfboro. Welcome to the board, to the committee, but, uh, I just had a couple of quick questions. One is, a number was just thrown out, uh, swept funds at 8 million. Uh, I'm curious what we receive back right now in, um, swept, what that number will go up to? Because obviously, we're receiving swept funds, so if the number is doubling, we're gonna be receiving double that amount. So what's that amount off of the 8 million? Just curious. Um, the other thing is, as a Wolfboro resident, I'm curious why only one half of the impact fees will be coming back to Wolfboro, um, if that's the, and I also think that the, the board should discuss for the citizens what this impact fee situation is, and why we will be receiving funds back, and how the impact fees were used throughout the whole district instead of just saying locally for, um, Wolfboro residents. And then just quickly, um, I know that the current representatives in the room right now in, um, committee, and actually in the House last year, did vote against feeding our children at 350% poverty rate, and, uh, I'm just shocked that Mr. Cordelli just got up here to argue against feeding children. So, um, please go forward and, and feed our children in our schools. Thank you.
Hi, um, Kayla Hewitt, uh, resident of Wolfboro. Just up here, I mean, a squatting, I guess. Um, just up here, uh, again, a thank you, and to add a positive voice to this, because I understand sometimes, uh, representatives are representatives for all of us, and I want you to know that I am very grateful for you, again, and grateful for the strategic plan and the things that were put forward. I don't see an issue with you, Brody, being, um, that was not even, I don't understand, I guess, the feeding children thing also gets me, but thank you for trying to take action to care for our children, to nourish our children, fed children, work harder, work better, and also probably have less discipline issues. Thank you.
Is there any additional public input? Does, before you go again, Representative, does anyone else have comments before we let the second people go, or people go a second time? Go ahead. Three minutes, please.
Thank you, I just wanted to, uh, ready? I just wanted to clarify that the statewide education property tax is not actually collected from the municipalities, um, at, according to law, based from 2011. So the towns of Tuftonboro and Wolfboro actually collect excess of what is needed for their base adequacy rate, and the municipalities are allowed to keep that, that tax dollar, those tax dollars for use for educational purposes. So we don't actually send that money to the state, we don't act, the only, the towns, the other four towns in our district receive money from the state, and that's not necessarily clear on the budget, because it only lists the money that is actually received from the state when it's, when the budget references, um, tax dollars that involves the swept and the local together. It's all accounted for, it doesn't matter, but it's just not clear to the, if you're trying to figure out exactly how it's differentiated, it's not always clear.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there any additional public input?
Do you want the website? That gives you the information.
If you guys could save the discussions for outside, outside of public input, that'd be appreciated. Seeing none, um, I'll close public input. I will take a point of, um, personal privilege, I want you guys to know that, um, I had no influence over nutrition access, being in the, um, strategic plan. Um, I had no involvement in the formulation of strategic plan. There was a great team that Harry Schiller and the administration have formulated, um, to create these goals with public input from almost over 400 members of the public who submitted surveys, staff and other stakeholders. Less than 5% of my salary goes towards lobbying, it's required by the state that I register if I'm going to directly explain how policies work and encourage legislators to vote for legislation, and the only legislation we advocate for is legislation that seeks to end child and hunger, and all hunger in the state of Hampshire. If you would like to ask me any additional questions about that, I'd be happy to clarify, and any member of the public too, I'd be happy to tell you about my job and, um, what it entails, and how I make sure that there aren't any conflicts of interest when I serve on this board or any public board with my, uh, with my profession. So, um, thank you for, for shedding light on that. I, I didn't think we'd, that would come up tonight, I thought it might come up during the election, but I'm happy that, uh, we could square it away tonight. So, with that being said, um, the student representative report, Elliot.
I was gonna reach. I might just have to talk a little bit longer. Uh, well, everybody, for any new board members or for anybody in the audience tonight, uh, my name is Elliot Esler, I'm the student representative, uh, from Kingswood Regional High School to this school board. Starting inside the building, uh, with classes, midterms will be this week for, uh, students at KRHS for the second semester. That is, of course, barring the idea of us having school on Wednesday and Thursday, which is looking more and more unlikely, thank you, late winter. Um, scholarship applications and college decision season are in full swing for our senior class, although, pardon me, uh, with the fast, uh, situation being what it is, that may be a little delayed, uh, from previous years. Uh, most colleges have moved their, um, decision deadline to June 1st as opposed to May 1st, uh, in order to give students time to sort that out. Uh, the senior class is also fundraising currently for events like prom, graduation, the senior banquet, and everything else that they have going on at the end of the year. Um, they have, um, created over $12,000 in just the past week, uh, to help fund events like that, uh, and they're still fundraising, so if you know any seniors, reach out to them, I'm sure they'd, uh, love to make some more money. Um, additionally, the sophomore and junior classes, um, on May 4th will be holding, um, a 5K road race to, uh, help fundraise for their classes for the events that they will be having when they are seniors. Uh, moving over to the athletics department, uh, spring sports are getting, uh, ready for the regular season. They have had scrimmages both this past week and this coming week, and the first game should be, uh, starting around, uh, the middle of this month and moving into May. The boys' baseball team opened up, are opening up the season, uh, ranked second in Division Two in the preseason rankings, um, looking to repeat some success from last year. And finally, moving over to the arts department, uh, the KRHS music department will be having their jazz night on this, well, double feature performances from not only, uh, the Kingswood Jazz Band, but also some outside groups, uh, there will be concessions sold in the lobby, so, uh, be there if you wanna enjoy some good music. KRHS Theater, uh, had a very good time hosting the state festival this past weekend, um, after getting selected to move on to the state level from the regional level. Kingswood not only got to host, but performed their own show, uh, Shades of Here and Love. Uh, they had a great time, they met a bunch of great, uh, people from across the state, and Senior Cole Murray won the Sarah Buggler Award for Best Set Design and Construction in the entire state. Uh, I'm sure anybody who went to go see the show could attest to the masterful, um, abilities that were demonstrated through that set. Um, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Elliot. Appreciate your updates, as always, very energetic, and making things happen at the high school throughout the district. Um, superintendent's report, uh, superintendent's district update? Of course, please.
Thank you. We got it, we got it. Perfect, thank you very much. Okay, so first, in, um, the district update, um, I'll touch on a few highlights. Um, first, on Thursday, March 21st, the district, along with Milton and Bruce, participated in tabletop exercises facilitated by New Hampshire Homeland Security. These exercises provided an invaluable opportunity for administration, staff, and representatives from local law enforcement and fire departments to collaborate and consider hypothetical emergency scenarios. This event served as an important step in enhancing our preparedness and response capabilities. We will meet again with our law enforcement first responders, um, in the fall. Secondly, uh, in the district update, Portrait of a Learner. So I'm pleased to present the insightful findings from our recent Portrait of a Learner survey. I touched on this last month. However, the team is honing in on the top attributes, which we look forward to presenting at the main meeting, but I'll share that the top five, in no particular order, are academic success, self-direction, the positive, being a positive community member, perseverance, and problem-solving, as the five attributes of, um, what our community is looking for as a portrait of our, um, students coming out of our school system. We look forward to, um, highlighting that. I'd also like to, um, help announce a job fair. So Governor Wentworth's School District in Milton, we are holding a, a, a school district's job fair. This will be Thursday, April 18th, at the Lakes Region Tech, Technical Center, uh, 3:00 to 6:00 PM. So we will have displays and information, I think there will be some interviews on the spot, um, so we'll be sharing and answering questions as far as open positions. Um, many of our, um, administration and staff members will be there, so we encourage, um, people to go to our website, GW, GWRSD.org, on the employment tab, to, um, find our current openings, and join us for our job fair. Please help us spread the word. I'll continue.
Yeah, Marianne, please.
So next, um, an update, this, on the strategic plan. So our first order of business, uh, we have, we have different things going on across our, our, um, teams, but the first thing that we wanted to put in place was a timeline. So we created a timeline, and this is already posted on the strategic plan page of our website. We currently have the plan posted, and we also have the timeline posted. This is a four-page document where we have the focus area, um, strategies, um, by year. So you'll see there, um, each year of, um, the first activities that we will, um, tackle under all of the focus areas by each year. So just another way to look at what the district will be tackling, um, and, uh, many of these items, we will be bringing to the board, um, as we move forward. Some things will be, um, sooner, some things will be in the fall at the budget process, um, but we will be, um, bringing those items to the board, and, um, I'll be updating the board on the strategic plan activities on a monthly basis. Um, any questions at this point about the strategic plan timeline?
Anyone have any questions on the board about the strategic plan, the timeline?
Okay.
Hearing none.
Hearing none. Uh, the next item is a reminder about the total solar eclipse. So I did send, uh, a letter to families on March 19th about the eclipse, um, so that will be one week from today. The total, um, the total eclipse will be approximately 3:29 on Monday, um, but it begins an hour prior and, and ends an hour after. So the whole, the whole event will be from 2:30 to approximately 4:30. Um, we have secured glasses, these glasses, and, uh, for every staff and student, and we will be, uh, distributing those the morning of. Um, I know that some schools, staff, uh, pending, uh, will have some after-school viewing sessions, um, some families may choose to dismiss their students so they can, uh, view at home, um, and others, um, will, will be on our regularly scheduled transportation, but that's happening, um, a week from today. We just wanna stress the safety with, with the safety glasses. If, uh, you or your family do not have glasses, you can safely still view the eclipse on a few websites, especially, um, the NASA website, so we encourage, we encourage viewing safely. So that will be one week from today. Thank you.
Election results?
Thank you, next item, election results. So on March 12th, I'll just quickly, uh, review the, the election results for the minutes. Um, we have, let's see, so Article 1, um, we have our, our new school board members, so Mary Prechilleriff, the at-large position, uh, Dr. Elizabeth Scheckler for the new Durham position, and Guy Arthur Pike II for the Tuftonboro position. Also Caitlin Purdy Murphy for the school district moderator, one-year term. Um, and all the warrant articles passed. So the operating budget, we're very grateful to the support from our communities for support in passing the operating budget, as well as the maintenance capital reserve, turf field capital reserve, building and maintenance, um, as well as the school resource officer warrant. Thank you very much for your support. The next item are the, um, the end-of-year announcements and activities. So at this time, uh, we do have the last day of school, um, what was tentatively scheduled. So at this time, uh, we do have the last day of school, um, what was tentatively scheduled for June 18th. Um, we had two full snow days already, so we will have to make up those two full sm, snow days. So the last day would be at the earliest, um, June 20th. Um, I have been told that we have some weather coming in this week, kind of significant weather, so that is to be determined. We would only need a vote from the board if we were asking the board to waive days, um, if we switched to counting hours instead of school days. We're not doing that at this time, uh, we're just announcing to the board, um, as far as making up the days that were already canceled due to snow. And if we have one more, then we would have to make up that one as well. Which would bring us to Friday of that week. If it goes beyond the Friday, we will definitely be coming to the board to, um, ask to waive, uh, a makeup day on the following Monday.
Okay. Yeah, any questions, Kathy?
I had a couple of people ask me if we would ever consider going back to Saturday schools or scat, that's a weird feedback, Saturday school, as opposed to, um, extending the school year beyond June 18th. I know we did that in the past, and I think, I think we did quite a bit of it when we had to, uh, do some building projects that were going to require students not being in the building, and I was wondering if we could consider that as a possibility.
We, thank you for that question. We certainly could consider that as a possibility. You know, I think in years when we have major snowstorms and back-to-back-to-back cancellations, um, I think it is wise for us to be nimble and consider all of our options. I'm grateful that we have, um, the, the option to count hours instead of days, um, because when we do that, we do have a buffer, um, of, of hours where we can, um, you know, count in that, in that way rather than days, and then usually we can take care of it. Um, but, you know, certainly if, if we have many, many cancellations, we should, uh, consider all of our options. Thank you. So, um, end-of-year events, I've included the, um, end-of-school year, um, district events. It's a very, very long list, so this is for, um, the board's information, and, um, board members, um, may, uh, attend these events. Let us know if you have any questions, um, about the events moving forward.
Kathy, send out a spreadsheet.
Yes. We usually send out, uh, a, a spreadsheet so board members know that we have representation at events, um, and you can, you know, see, uh, where you'd like to attend. And then the last item of superintendent reports, um, is the joint boards affirmation and appointment. So this item is the annual affirmation for our joint boards. We have Moltenborough, Farmington, and Prospect Mountain from Alton, who all participate, um, at our Lakes Region Technical Center. So, um, it's an affirmation of those joint boards, and we have the joint board meeting, um, coming up in May. Um, and then also the appointment, technically, the board, um, should have a liaison to the, um, to the joint board. So that's, um, something we look for in motion.
Do people have questions? Would I see some confusion?
Are we supposed to have a piece of paper that we can look at, that, or not?
At the Crescent Lake meeting, we approved the joint board affirmation. Remember the agreement for LRTC?
Yeah, yeah.
So we approved that. Per the agreement, someone needs to be appointed to represent the board at that meeting. So we need one individual, so. No one wants to volunteer as tribute? I can just do it. Most of us attend the meeting anyways. Um, most of the other boards also have, the majority of their boards at the meeting, um, receive a presentation, Kathy Tateron, some other of the, um, some of the other administrators from LRTC, but does anyone want that, um, that role?
I don't remember what the function of that delegate is.
It's just required as part of the agreement, just going to that meeting, which most of us already attend.
I can do that, so you don't have to do that.
Yeah, and I imagine we'll see each other there, but, um, then I, then, then thank you, Jim Pittman, and I will seek a motion, um, to make Jim Pittman the, um, the appointee for that meeting.
So.
So good.
All right, any discussion? Sorry, Jim. All in, sorry, the clerk will read them.
Dr. Manning?
Yes.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Sure.
Dana?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Rudy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Dr. Ericallian. Um, I also just want to flag to you, you'll see in your packets, we had approved the meeting schedule for the 2024-2025 school year, sorry, school board meeting schedule on January 8th, 2024. Um, I know there had been some discussion from some board members wanting to meet the first Monday in August. I'm not sure if the 12th is the first Monday in August. If it isn't, please contact me, and we can address that at our next board meeting. I can add it to the agenda.
It's not the first.
It's not the first Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, then I know that we had discussed that, so that's something we can consider for our next agenda. Chairman's report, uh, correspondence. The district, uh, expressed sympathy to an employee of the district. A thank you card came from, um, former board member Stephanie King to the board, to the district, and the SAU administration. And, um, and we need to plan our New Hampshire School Boards Association Board Member Training. They have, um, a lot of trainings. We'll see, a member orientation coming up that we put. Is there any packets?
We put that in the new board.
In the new board member packet. So if you're a new board member, you got these, uh, these two dates to register for May 6th and May 9th at 6:00 PM online, um, board member training, so I highly suggest them. They're, they're very helpful, and, um, I would encourage other board members, it's worth attending, just sitting, letting it play maybe as you eat your supper, and, you know, just brushing up on everything. And, um, we will be trying to bring in, um, folks from the Hampshire School Boards Association to give us all a four, a full board member training, um, just to brush us up on, you know, the, the standard operating procedures and the state laws that govern how we, how we behave and what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. So, um, that concludes my report. Um, we'll enter into committee reports, and I'll recognize, uh, team leader for academic affairs, Charlie, take it away.
Okay, um, can everyone hear me okay? I, I read that.
You should bring that mic a little.
Well, if you're hearing it closer, there's this weird feedback kind of thing. I don't, yeah, I don't mind bringing it closer. So. Am I the only one hearing that, or can other people hear sort of a delay kind of thing? Well, anyway. Okay, so what I always do before, you know, when I start my committee meetings, I read through the, um, policies, and we usually break them down into three groups for approval or discussion. Uh, the ones that are recommended for adoption, the ones recommended for revision, and then finally the ones recommended for withdrawal. And so I'm guessing that, oh, before I forget, Kathy, Kathy L., I want to thank you for working so hard to get the policies ready so that the board members have them in, well, in advance of the meetings, so they can read through and come up with any suggested revisions or corrections, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
So does anyone have, we're going to start with policy G E A, athletic team coaches. Did anyone have any, um, suggestions regarding that particular policy? No. So hearing none, um, Mr. Chair, I think we could, uh, well, no, wait, this is all first read, so I always, I always get ahead of myself. Yeah, we're not voting on any of these. This is just first read.
So, so for, for Beth and Guy, for your understanding, we first read, you read the policies, you let them repinate for a month. Second read is when substantive edits are made, and there might be more discussion. If you have any comments on policies, you're more than free to discuss them now. Um, this is in appropriate form, but if you have no comments, then, you know, we just move on to the next set of first reads. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any comments on any of the recommended for revisions? And I will read these so that everyone knows what we're all looking at. Uh, first of all, G A, personnel job descriptions. G A D A, employee references and verification. G B D, board employee communications. G B E, employee rights and responsibilities. G B E A, staff ethics. G B E B A, professional dress code. G B E B A hyphen R, guidelines for professional dress. G B E C, drug-free workplace and drug-free schools. G B G, employee protection. G B G V A, use of automated external defibrillator, defibrillators. G B J, personnel records. G B J hyphen R, personnel records. G B J A, Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, better known as HIPAA. G B K, employee complaints and grievances. G B K hyphen R, employee complaints and grievances. G C B, staff contracts. G C B B, special contracts. G C C B C, Family and Medical Leave Act. G C F, professional staff hiring. G C F hyphen R, professional staff hiring. G C G, part-time and substitute staff. G C O, evaluation of professional staff. G C Q A, reduction in force. G D F, support staff hiring. G D O, evaluation of support staff. G D Q, support staff termination of employee agreement, and J L F, reporting child abuse or neglect. So did anyone have any comments or suggested revisions to this group of policies that I just enumerated? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the group of policies that are recommended for withdrawal. And once again, I'll remind everyone that whenever we find policies that are either redundant or overlap with existing policies, those are policies that, because they're really as powerful as we, we bring them to the board with a recommendation or withdrawal. So, excuse me, read that list. G B D hyphen R, procedure for presentation before the school board. G B E D, tobacco slash e-cig products banned use and possession in and on school facilities and grounds. G B G A V, Affordable Care Act. G C, recognition of professional bargaining units. G C A A B, professional staff hiring hyphen nurses. G C B A, placement on the salary schedule. G C C A, leaves of absence. G C C A hyphen E, leaves of absence GWRSD SAU 49, paid slash unpaid leave request form. G C G hyphen R, guidelines for hiring substitute professional staff. G C H, professional staff orientation. G C I, part-time employment. G C K, professional staff assignments and transfers. G C M C, meetings for professional staff. G C O hyphen R, administrative guidelines for annual academic coordinator slash department head slash team leader nominations. G C O A A hyphen dismissal and non-renewal. G D, recognition of support staff bargaining unit. And J I C G, tobacco slash e-cigarette products banned use and possession in and on school facilities and grounds. Did anyone have any, uh, comments or suggested revisions or inclusions for those policies? Oh, wait, they're up for withdrawal. Anybody not want to see those withdrawn?
Um, Mr. Pittman?
Just had a, a question on the G C M C meetings for professional staff. Just sort of curious what the background is on that. Is this a, uh, also a situation of redundancy that is, uh, covered in this policy?
It's a local policy only that was created, um, in 2000, and it's covered in the collective bargaining agreement in terms of their, their meeting allotment? Or do you think we feel that's necessary?
Thank you.
Good question. Is there any other comments on these policies for withdrawal? I just have, um, one comment, the G B D dash procedure for presentation before the school board. If, if you ever feel as if you have a presentation, that's when the purview of the board does see, you can always contact the SAU office. So, just getting rid of that policy doesn't mean that there will be no more presentations. Obviously, you see every, every week, sorry, every month, we receive a student presentation from a staff member, so it's usually the best part of the school board. Hearing no other comments, um, we'll move on to the next, uh, committee, sorry, team report, uh, Buildings and Maintenance. Jim Pittman?
Hey, thank you. I believe you have to announce that the next meeting of the committee will be April 18th. Let me tie it firmly, it is 3 o'clock. Can we bring, bring that?
Yeah, correct.
So other than that, I have no other, uh, I mean, that will be at the SAU office? Yep, 3 o'clock. Bring this out, tell it to you. And that, who's that report?
Awesome, thank you, thank you, Mr. Pittman. Um, Finance. Mr. Pittman, you are the most highest-ranking person left on the Finance Committee, so if you have anything to report, um, please do. If you don't, then we can move on.
I have nothing other than to add that the concerns expressed by Vic Burry that are active in October, so. I don't know the next, uh, date for, uh, for the meeting.
There isn't one at this time. Um, if there is a need, you know, if you shared a, if a call meeting is presented, we'll elect a new leader for the Finance Committee and we'll figure all that. Tom, do you have any comments about any of the finance stuff? Okay, and we'll continue working and keep you looked out for that, Tom. Um, Human Resources, I don't think we have any update at this time. Not at this time. I think, who are the remaining board members from Human Resources? Uh, Jim and Dana. Do you guys have any comments? Perfect. Um, and with that, we'll go into our closing activities. So advanced planning, you'll see you got your end-of-school 2024 district events, um, as Superintendent mentioned, Kathy Legasti. Our clerk will be sending out a, um, a Google spreadsheet that you can fill out and indicate, um, what end-of-year events you'll be attending. Yep, um, some future meeting dates and events that you'll see on the agenda. On April 3rd, there's an early release, um, for incoming service staff. On April 18th, the Buildings and Maintenance Committee is meeting, as Jim Pittman mentioned, 3 o'clock at the SAU 49 office. Um, from April 22nd through April 26th, there's no school. That's when we'll be having spring recess. Um, May 6th is a joint boards meeting at the Skylight Dining Room at 6 o'clock. Everyone is welcome to attend. Jim Pittman is required to attend. Um, May 6th is also our school board meeting, eh, at, um, Kingswood Regional Middle School at 7:30 PM, and then on May 22nd is Gold Scholars Luncheon at Back Bay Boathouse in Wolfboro, 12 o'clock. And you can also view the GWRSD calendar at GWRSD.org backslash calendar, and you can always call the SAU office to receive any of these dates. Yes, Beth?
Time is the joint board meeting on the 6th?
Uh, that'll be 6 o'clock, at the Skylight Dining Room in LRTC. Sorry, my apologies. Um, and with that, oh, and one other thing is, um, hopefully over the next month, Kathy will reach out. We're going to try to find a date for when we can do our New Hampshire School Boards Association training. Um, when that will be will depend on people's availability over the next couple of months. I know last year was kind of tough to try to schedule it so everyone could attend, but that's the goal, so, um, be looking for an email, and please try to, once we find a date, lock it in and, you know, make the commitment. it in, you know, make the commitment, because it's really important that we all go through that training, so. And with that, we will have a second round of public input. 15 minutes, 3 minutes for individuals, please state your name and residency, and please try to speak to topics on the meeting agenda and be respectful of others, and don't direct your comments at those in the front row. Or, as Mr. Pittman goes again, is there anybody who hasn't spoken and would like to speak? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Tommy, by the way, Wolfboro. I just want to share a web address so citizens can understand where they can go and find more information about our state advocacy education aid. I'm going to give the address, HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot education dot NH dot gov backslash WHO dash WE dash ARE backslash DIVISION dash OF dash EDUCATOR dash AND dash ANALYTIC dash RESOURCES backslash BUREAU dash OF dash EDUCATION dash STATISTICS backslash STATE dash ADEQUATE dash EDUCATION dash AID. So if you're looking for information on our adequate education aid, every town is listed there for every year, and they even have on there potentially like 2025, just so that citizens can look up.
Could you please email that link? I don't think she could get all of that.
Absolutely.
I didn't get all of that either. That's my fault, thank you.
Come on, email it right back.
Is there any additional public input?
I just need to rebut that, that information is available on the website. I have the information regarding the amendment for House Bill 1583 from the legislative budget office.
All right. Seeing none, I will seek motion for us to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the rule. I was about to look at that, the new board members. I'm going to get at it.
Okay.
Dana?
Yes.
Dana?
Just saying.
Tom? Mary? Beth?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Bruni?
Aye. We're adjourned, see you next month.